Well, um, Cheryl pointed out that we have to get the revenues.
Okay. And I assume this is.
Well, we think it's so it is and some water. But that process has started.
We're calling each order. Any more communications?
No.
Thank you. Um, have you guys had a chance to give me the minutes?
Voting is up.
Okay, next item is board elections. I think we're just a little bit late on this, so I don't know if anyone has any motions they'd like to vote for.
Uh, I motion to continue Virginia Benellis president.
I would second that motion.
Motion approved five zero.
Thanks all. I'm honored and excited. Um, do we have a secretary motion? Do you want to continue Frances or?
Motion to perfrance to do in the secretary role.
Second.
Voting is up. Motion approved five zero.
The questions are the most pleasant to serve with. Thank you. Um, the library renovation grant project update.
All right, so this is really a chance for you to ask the questions. I really don't have much in the way of updates that are concrete. Currently, the project is still in the design and scoping stage. So IDS, the engineering at our technical firm is still running tests and site visits today and tomorrow. They're doing a task visit, which is kind of about ingress and egress analysis for the building. So right now, they're still pulling data information together. At the last meeting, we tentatively agreed at a general plan for the first floor, and it's very tentative, given the fact that they won't really know what can be done until they start putting in numbers and figures to the plans. The overall scope is you can understand what we at the library propose and the city agreed to. It's really what you would expect, which is one, a reduction in the number, quantity of stacks, the bookshelves on the first floor. Anybody that really visits the library will notice that they're not being used at capacity. So taking that into account, we ran the numbers as far as how many materials are usually on the shelves versus how many are out, and then factoring in a buffer of around twenty-five percent, because we like to have the shelves two-thirds or seventy-five percent full, so that way they don't look like they're overflowing. We provided engineers a number and we have a good amount of space left over for shelving. Essentially, just so you know, it's about, if you were looking at the stacks from the entryway, you've got them all the way to the left, the ones that are right before where there's like that central pathway that leads right down the middle, that cuts them off and kind of those west side, east side. Everything east is what we recommend gets removed, and the bulk of the stacks being kind of gets that far wall that's flat, where that would be most of them. Additional stacks are still recommended that are going to be mobile, and some more stacks are recommended that can be fixed for kind of like teen collections. So that's a big impact we've noticed if you're looking at the plans. They haven't finalized them, and again, because if we don't want to show you things in the public, stuff that's not going to happen. But that's where we're going with as far as the number of stacks. The total number of items on the shelves will remain essentially the same, it's just now they'll actually fit stacks, which is what we want, because right now, we've got stacks that are too tall, and really, it's taking up floor space that could be used for public activities, study spaces, et cetera. So we're really trying to maximize the floor space with that. Other changes we propose that aren't required, again, the goal of the grant is infrastructure and critical needs to the building, so it's really circling all around that. So as IDS learns more about the requirements, both from the building inspector and building officials' viewpoint of what is required and necessary, that will dictate some of what can be done with the grant or something we can't. Beyond that, knowing that we need to update the restrooms for EDA compliance, so both increasing restroom space, but also potentially adding more restrooms to that floor is an option that's being assessed. Moving the Friends bookstore elsewhere on that first floor is also an option that we're investigating. So ideally, giving them their own space to kind of free up, right now, whether you want to visit the Friends, they have several areas throughout the library that they use, kind of do different parts of their operation. Of course, they have the bookstore, which is where they sell materials, et cetera, they have a little office in there. They also have a donation processing area in circulation in our customer service. And then upstairs on the second floor, in what is our server room and miscellaneous room, they have storage. So part of the goal of these we're proposing is moving them all into one area that's continuous for them, that way they're not all over the place and using space that could be otherwise used by the public or by staff. Another change we propose is moving the teen space into its own enclosed area closer to the entrance. So that would be currently where the information desk is, if you're going like towards the computers, to the right of it, behind the information desk are staff offices. We can make better use of some existing staff space, so that would repurpose that into a teen space. And again, moving up somewhere that's closer to the entrance, easier to see, easier to market your collections is a goal. Again, this is all very tentative as far as what the budget will allow us to do. These are our wish lists and kind of like the vision being, one, when you come in, having new collections, moving forward, you have a service desk with holes. Beyond that would be the teen area, so stacks and a teen kind of zone. The left would continue to be computer space and a kind of communal work-study area. Beyond that, when you're sort of having your help with me, beyond that, you're in the quiet zone that's right now, we would like that to be closed, so that way the quiet zone is quiet. And then pulling back from that quiet zone would be, again, removal of stacks and more open co-working space with the information that's being moved somewhere around there, to kind of centralize it and make it easier for people that are at the desk and all computers, or us as people in the quiet room, et cetera, are getting into the collections. Moving back towards where the current Friends bookstore is, that's, we're hoping, will turn into two enclosed study rooms that will fit four to six people, so a total of twelve, a total of two enclosed study rooms, which in the future could always be repurposed for other uses, like a recording studio, et cetera, but it could start off as an enclosed room going around the corner. This is where along your right, you would have the stacks. And in front of you in the current kind of not quiet, but also not necessarily loud area that currently exists, that's where we would see the Friends bookstore area, and right in front of it, what I call a cafe, but it's not really a cafe, because we're not going to have a kitchen, but flooring that would allow for food and kind of more of a socializing space, that's another good level. And the idea of creating the Friends bookstore there is to encourage people to start at the entrance and navigate through the library, and, you know, a lot of people like to buy the books from the bookstore. And so getting them to navigate through the space is really the goal. That's where we're at. Of course, at any time, if you think we're missing something, feel free to give me a call or an email, and hoping sometime in the near future, once those plans and budgets are finalized, to give you a more realistic presentation of what is happening. So as far as budgets, again, we don't quite know where everything's going to land, because we don't have exact items, that's what they're working towards, and that really depends on the results of studies and analysis and feasibility of kind of the plans as presented, at least now they got something to work off of, and we should in the near future, in the coming months, have a better idea of items and priorities as far as what needs to be done, let's say, for the building and safety, versus what we would like to have done. And honestly, towards the like to have, we already know that furniture, other things are not included in the grant, so once we know how much that will cost is when I can kind of provide you and our stakeholders a better idea of grant needs, et cetera, for financing the nice-to-haves and enhancements that aren't covered by the grant.
Any update on lighting?
The lighting, I, we have not seen any lighting reports recently. If we keep the existing stacks for similar versions, at least the area around those could probably be repurposed to use similar lighting systems. Beyond that, it's very likely we're going to try to save as much funds as we can by using light that makes use of the reflective ceiling. But again, it's all really dependent on how much money is left over that can be used for the grant. Lighting is included, as long as it's, you know, fixed and not a standing ovation plan. But we don't have an exact, I haven't seen anything as far as updates for the lighting costs or limitation. Any other questions? I don't have very much, but I can answer.
Oh, thank you.
If you want me to bring questions to IDS, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Are you working with LSNS to determine like, like, I guess I don't really know the term, but it's like making sure that the use of the space is consistent with what you're seeing in trends and stuff like that?
Both myself and, for example, Heidi, my supervisor, she's been on all the meetings. So between the two of us, we either inform or we go out to those sources to double-check. And it's only until recently that we had a concrete plan, and so far from what I see, it is aligning with industry standards. What we would prefer, but which isn't really realistic with the funding, would be to have all mobile shelving, but because that would prohibit the use of the grant funds, it's not something we're really recommending. We're trying to find a balance between that, to allow for some mobile shelving in the areas that we think might need it best, in kind of like towards the entryway and kind of the co-working space, so that way if we ever have the need, we can move up and use that space for events. But there is going to be a need to compromise with that and retain fixed shelving, so that way we can maybe use the grant funds or reuse the existing shelving that's there in some way, depending on how much funding is left.
So what if like a dinner party came in with the funds to provide the full mobile shelving that you're looking for? Is that against the grant or?
No, I mean, I think we could always try exterior funds, it's just it would be something that would, you want, we'd want to factor into the timeline to say, okay, if you have exterior funding, this is how much it's going to cost to get these types of shelves, for example, and that's what we're working to get to. Then we can start thinking, all right, if we keep these shelves or remove all the shelves, how much time do we need to get the manufacturer, developer, the shelving, et cetera? There's usually pretty much off-the-shelf options, so there's not too much wait time, but depending on the scale and skill, sometimes they need more, because obviously, it's not really that they're building entire new shelves. We're not a giant library, but we are what we consider a medium-sized library, and so it can take some time, depending on who the manufacturer is.
So I think I'd be interested to know what, you know, the cost is of the mobile shelving that you are able to purchase, and then what the cost would be like on a grander scale, just because we do have, you know, the trust and everything, and if we're, just depending on the scale.
Right. And I think that's something we're still working towards, to really get a kind of price sheet for all, like, this is our ideal.
Right.
This is what we would want, and then price it out in realistic terms, and then be able to say, look, from here and above are required, and then from here down are optional or nice-to-haves, and then from there is where we're going to turn our eyes and say, okay, what can we actually feasibly ask for and where, or where can we get these or above from? But we're not there yet.
Are there any thoughts to, you mentioned two small meeting rooms. Are there any thoughts or possibilities of adding to that?
Yes. So in the plan we proposed, we're leaving room and space for future study pods, so standalone pods for around two people, they could be more. And the plan was, because we've added three of them, so I totally have five study rooms. That would be ideal for the main usage, which is two to four people, is typically what we're getting asked for. And those can also be, those would be nice to have, because in most cases, we're not fixing them, but there is the option of enclosing, it's just beyond, we're keeping it flexible, just because we don't quite know how much it's going to cost to make it all built-in versus, for example, if we have these standalone study pods, those can be removed, they can be edited and changed in the future. It gives us a little bit more flexibility, and then once we filled it in, then it's that, it is that room for until the next generation.
What do these look like? Is it similar to like the pods upstairs where the literacy folks do their?
No, so those are more like what I would call cubicles.
Yes.
Let me see, like, I don't know if you guys can see this.
Yes.
Okay, so. So if you look at like on the image.
Wow.
This is kind of a standard model.
That's cool.
And this is around what they run, around twenty thousand of these. And there's variations, some come with built-in AC, which is something we'd probably want to look into. A lot of them have the option of adding in, you know, fire, so fire sprinklers or built-in fire deterrence. But this is essentially the idea, because the two built-in study rooms will be much larger and they'll be like four to six people. But we do recognize, I mean, that most people don't necessarily need that much space, so having the option of adding three of these, and we can even have single-use ones, almost like phone booths to wrap the library, and that's kind of why I'm leaving a lot of space where the stacks are, for the option to, in the future, either add single-use ones, multi-people use ones, bigger ones, it's just having the space without the stacks will give us that flexibility. And even in the northern seating where the computers are right now, in the future, there's plenty of room there where we could get monitors for four people, six people, same thing. Basically, just building out the spaces.
Does the library currently have a nursing room?
No. There is one, in theory, for staff.
For staff, yep.
But there is not necessarily one for the public, no.
Just a quick question. You mentioned AC with the frame room pods, which is cool, but the library also doubles as a cool zone in the summer. Do the plans prioritize not interrupting that cool zone status?
It's an excellent question. We still don't know exactly how long, we know it's going to be closed, I can tell you that. The scope and the amount of work, I'm pretty sure there's very little likelihood that we'd be able to maintain the buildings, it's like the first floor, a lot of it's, we opened it, like the restrooms have to be torn down, so we don't know how long it's going to be closed for, but I don't see a scenario of not closing that first floor, or at least a period of time. We're aware of that, right now, we're still kind of figuring out how long it would need to be done, and again, that's contingent on the final plans and budget. But we do have alternatives, and we've already been brainstorming how we would continue the service, either using existing buildings on the library campus, like the Math Center, the literacy annex, and maybe reaching out to educational contact and that former funerary home building. But again, this is all very tentative, we don't quite know, and there's always the option of renting the space somewhere else, but again, that factors in costs. So we are considering all options, and we recognize the status of the library as a cool spot during the summer. But we don't really know right now, because we don't know what the budget is and what we're spending on yet, how extensive that building, a rebuilding, is going to take.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Can you remind me, when are we planning to create ground on these renovations?
If memory serves me correct, and I'll email you all just enough due to timeline, but I believe it's going to be early next year. So by the end of this year, it's planned that the final design plan and everything will go out to bid, and then by the end of this year, we should have some reconstruction and renovation contracts in place under IDS' guidance and reconstruction. So then groundbreaking would start sometime in early twenty twenty five, February-ish. Again, I believe that's around the time, but it's really dependent on everything else going according to the schedule and timeline, and we all know construction isn't always likely to stay exactly on schedule.
Is there any concern, or have we heard any concern from the folks who, I guess, is there like a feedback loop to the folks who are giving us the grant as to like what our timeline looks like?
The state library does have a grant monitor and the city's rep, Laura, she is in constant contact with them, so if we have questions, we get back and we give them routine reports.
And are they concerned at all with the fiscal position, how we are doing fiscally in Escapito?
They were aware when we applied for the grant, which is why the city received a waiver for matching funds.
Yep.
And so they're aware that, you know, the city's still under financial constraints and issues, but I haven't heard anything that would bring any alarm bells on the state's side as far as how we're spending, or at least we're spending the funding.
Who is Laura?
Laura McClenna is in the Bella, no, she's in Building, she's in Public Works.
Public Works.
She's in Public Works.
She's a management analyst.
Management analyst, so she's in charge, she's kind of our project manager for, for the library project.
It might be nice to have her come and speak to us about this project and just her, you know, back and forth with the state.
Sure, yeah, we can invite her.
Okay, great.
Also, for everybody's reference, I think an intrusive behind me is Robert Rhodes. He is the library's liaison representative of the city, so he's our liaison between myself and the city, and he is the interim director of community services, correct? Or are you now?
I would like to be, but I'm not, no. I am the assistant director.
Assistant director. I accidentally promoted you.
Okay with that.
So yes. So he works with Jennifer Schudneck.
Okay.
And so, but my day-to-day contact is Robert's. Any other questions about the grants? And again, we can invite Laura, but as far as the information, we won't have much, she won't have much more than I do as far as where we're at, but she definitely gave me more information about how the state is questioning, or any questions the state has, or how that relationship happens.
I would, I would be interested for me in hearing from her in the November or December timeframe.
Okay. Yeah, we should definitely have, by then, the schematics and the budgets and all that figured out.
There might also be some valid initiatives that influence what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Rena. We'll move on to policy review and update.
All right. So, for context, I've been, of course, reviewing policies, and there's a couple that are still pending, some changes that I'll eventually bring back to you. These one in particular came to my attention while reviewing and updating our website, which I'll get to later, but as I was updating certain parts, I was, of course, looking at policies and what is public facing. And we'll start with the easier one, which is collection development. Let me open up the background. Let me show you the current one. So this was last updated in twenty twenty-two, so it was a good chance to take a look at it. Essentially, my goal with the update here was in the sentence that tells us what kind of items are collected, or added to the collection, I should say. We did not, we were very, as far as the policy was written, it only said, these items come in a variety of formats, traditional print, large print, audiobooks, ebooks, online and audio books. We already have items that are not that, such as our book club bag kits, we're recently adding parks passes and other items, and so just to be inclusive, I do recommend adding some sort of language that says not limited to, but inclusive of these items. Whether we want to list everything, I don't necessarily recommend that, because that means that you have to be coming back and adding every single thing that we're adding to the collection. But my recommendation is to just add a clause that says such as, but not limited to, et cetera. I'm open to alternative phrasing, but I do recommend not being limited to just certain formats, because we never know what new thing might be coming out, and even though we do review this every year, it's just saving us time having to add every new gadget and thing that is being circulated. Any questions or concerns, comments?
Seems like a real good idea.
Questions?
Good.
Vote for Wardy.
All right, so I think, can they vote on that this time or the next time?
You can vote on it if you like, it's agenda asked, if you wanted to get for it.
Is that the only change you made?
On this one, on the collection development?
Yeah.
I believe so. Yes, that one is the only one that has that change, yes.
All right. I'll move to the group.
Second.
Voting is up. Motion approved five zero.
All right, so this will go live tomorrow. All right, now we get to the final ones. All right, so let me pull these up. First, I'm just going to pull up, all right, so let me start with Barbara, because the Barbara policy has a couple of changes I do want to recommend before we get into the controversial So it might be more, okay, so let's, let's start with the piece, or the lending schedule, which I have on the screen right now. There's a couple of new additions, so I've phrased it as library of things. We can name it kits, we can list it. Essentially, what we want to include is three-dimensional kits, objects, board games, things like that, which are typically included as all library things, and we could define that, but we don't currently have it listed as far as how often those check out, and since we don't, we're more or less defaulting to the no limit in twenty-one days, which I don't recommend. Let's say if we had a collection of board games, we don't necessarily want the family coming in and taking out all the board games or, you know, all the kits. So having some sort of limit to how many kits or how many board games, we could name each one if we like, but essentially, I'm thinking either two to four, if we're being very generous, and kind of looking for guidance from you as far as whether you prefer to be grouped together as library things, or if you wanted more granular, include, say, separate things for board games, kits for kids, kits for adults, tablets, hotspots, you can kind of see how the list keeps adding, and we can do that, it's just really depend on what you think would be best. And we can do that, it's just really depend on what you think would be best as far as those materials.
I think you can have a catch-all.
Okay. Do we like two? And I was trying to be consistent with the lending period being twenty-one days and three renewals like the others, but we're also hoping to change it there. Do you think two is good for a catch-all of library things?
I'm just going to say like with two and for the item limits, is that based off of just what the average is right now? I would say if that's the case, that's.
Essentially, yeah, it's kind of keeping in mind what the averages are and kind of what we anticipate, our ability to add to the collection and still have it be fair for everyone. Because kits tend to be a little bit more expensive and harder to put together, because we're not usually just buying them from our typical vendors. It takes more time, and so we don't add them as quickly. And so even if we're doing as much as we can, the amount of kits or items we can add is not as much as books. We can add two hundred books, no problem, because our vendors supplies with most of the processing already done. With these types of objects, there's a lot more staff work that goes into it. And so we can't have two hundred kits all of a sudden from one day to the other. And so it's more like maybe five kits come out a month, or, you know, if we're really good, ten. And because of that, the quantity that we would loan out, it has to be a little bit more reduced, so that way everybody has a chance to check it out and try it out. And so that's why we're kind of splitting the difference and saying, look, we expect around two, and that's about what we make is fair. And we're always welcome to, if we see that they're checking out and we have extras, we can always come back and say, look, no, I think we're comfortable with making it three, making it four.
And I want to clarify, did you say that the hotspots are included in this?
We can, we can always separate those out. So if we ever think that some item is too popular or needs special distinct item limits and lending limits, we can always come back and it's up to you to decide, hey, how are those hotspots checking out, Rena? That will tell you, you know, maybe it's our recommendation that we split it off and make it maybe one hotspot and, you know, X number of days.
Yeah, so the only with, I'm finding, I agree on trying to limit the number of categories. I just don't want a family who needs to borrow hotspots to be limited in how much they can check out for board games, right? That's more of a need rather. So are any other items that would be similar to a hotspot in this category that you can think of?
I'm trying to think, because hotspot is unique in that thankfully, like it can be like one per card is usually enough. Because you wouldn't want them checking out two hotspots, for example. Beyond that, we might say, if we ever do the step of like checking out tablets or computers that they own rather than just in-house, that might be something where we also consider a limit of one. But I can tell you, it's more likely in the near future that we can get to the hotspots before we get to tablets or computers for checkout.
Is there an age limit to who can check out the hotspots?
Not technically, not right now.
So I have the same question, similarly along to what we're talking about. So I think that, I could be wrong, but I think that most parents with toddlers or small children just use their own library card to check out items for their small children. And I'm thinking about the families that homeschool or have multiple small children, and they need multiple kits or board games or a hotspot or they're homeschooling their kids. That I would just, I like that we group everything together to make it easier on the staff, but I would just consider adding or increasing the limit to maybe four.
Okay, we can try that, especially if we're pulling out, say, like the hotspots. We can start out with four, and I can always let you know if we're seeing any trouble or problems with how they're being checked out. For the hotspots, are there any recommendations as far as lending period and number of renewals? Are we comfortable with the twenty-one days and three renewals?
How popular are our hotspots?
I can tell you from experience, the hotspots tend to be very popular. They tend to stay and stay where they're checked out. So getting them returned is usually a challenge. We usually work around that by deactivating the hotspots once their lending period of renewals are done. Similar to how if something comes marked as lost, how we deactivate them. That usually encourages people to return them, not always. So it's more of the balancing what we wish as the intent of lending and renewals versus the reality of how people use the materials, just like with everything else, since we don't have overdue fines or anything. We have a few levers we can pull at deactivating or marking as a loss and deactivating their account in those cases. But with the hotspots, you know, I've seen everything from one-week lending periods to one-month lending periods in libraries for hotspots.
How many hotspots do you have?
We don't currently have any yet, but it's.
Oh.
But we can get, we were, once we started, we were, I think, probably just around like around twenty hotspots, ten to twenties in the budget. So again, if we make it, say, a week and then three renewals, that's kind of defaulting to a lending period of twenty-one days. Otherwise, it's, you know, twenty-one times three.
Basically, that's two months.
Yep, you would think that would be enough.
You would.
What if we did one month with zero renewals?
Was it possible? I think that would work.
Yeah, just because, you know, folks, you know, for whatever reason, don't need a gap filler or say they're moving and they can't turn the service on right away, then they can get the hotspot, but then they can, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, it's usually for transitional periods or vacationers. That's what I've seen a lot of people using for. And so a lot of people that may be visiting, they get like a guest card or a non-resident card.
Couldn't you like take it camping, too?
You can also take it, yep, because they use it. As long as there's a cell signal, you can use it.
That's so interesting.
And really, the goal with the hotspots is to lower that access to information, the barriers to access, because not everybody has like a cellphone that can beat a hotspot or don't have the data plans, et cetera. And so it can help break internet at home, especially if people, I know that there's a lot of programs that reduce the cost for internet, but even with that, some people still can't afford it, so it's really giving them an offer.
Comfortable with a thirty days, one time, or no renewals, I think that will help get the hotspots cycled anymore rather than, you know, having family needing it.
That makes sense to me.
And was it good with twenty-one days and three renewals for the library things at four being the limit?
Should it, should it be four all up? But that would mean that somebody could come in and take four board games? Does it get too complicated to say two of any one thing for a maximum of four?
I can look into it. It's, I don't think our, the library system isn't as, isn't very granular, and so it is basically, we can do it by collection type. I don't think you could have it be like, we could, policy-wise, call it two, and then internally, it would be a little trickier, because there's all the automatic triggers within the system in that way. So it'd either be like two board games and two something else separately, as two different collection types, or we use a collection type library things and we limit it to four.
Do we have board games?
We do have board games for in-house use, but I want to get some for circulating. We're being, we're trying to future-proof our policies.
What are the things called to library of things?
So not that we have plans for it, but it's a lot of things. So libraries have, for example, some libraries check out power tools. Some of them have kickpans, some of them have ties, others.
Ties?
Yep.
Like for business?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
Other examples I've seen are, of course, toys, learning kits, kind of those are more of the traditional things we're seeing.
Do we have like nature kits or something?
Exactly, we have nature backpacks, and we've got park backpacks. And of course, technically, like the museum passes are their own thing, but essentially they're a related category in some cases.
So a question with the number of renewals. Let's say someone checked out the four board games, and since our system automatically renews, is there any way for another family to put a hold on some of that?
Yes, so all the items would be, it's similar to any other materials. If there is a hold on it, it would block them from auto-renewing, just like it is with books or audiobooks, et cetera.
Okay, and I know when I check out books, I get like emails.
Right.
Like your item is automatically renewed, but the families who have items get a courtesy email, letting them know that there is a hold there or it's not going to be automatically renewed?
Yes, as long as they have accurate contact information.
Yes, and we can only do so much.
Then they do get their courtesy emails and courtesy. Eventually, we're working towards getting, again, SMS text messages. We're in the works of updating the system that does that. But right now, the most reliable method is email, because we know that not everybody will send their email for it. But yes, safety differences and criticism differences.
With SMS, I have seen dramatic improvements in response times and other things, so.
Yeah, it's been a technical issue with the library just because of the system that it uses, and a lot of carriers block automatic notices as spam. And so a part of that is a problem we're trying to get past, but it's really kind of more structural as far as too much spam being out there.
Maybe I'm overthinking this, but let's say Park Pass. So I can come in and say, I want four?
Currently, we don't really have a limit to how many Park Passes, because again, it's not here. We could include that as an option, or like park and museum passes. Is there one or two?
Well, a family of four.
Because usually the passes include a family, it's usually, it's not just a one user. We could also always say that, you know, it varies, that's always an option. I don't recall off the top of my head, because we have the digital museum passes, which is through a separate service, and then we've got the ones that we individually receive, say for like the parks passes that we receive from the state. And that's kind of like a yearly basis, they don't always be those park passes. But we can outline what it is. I think it's just a reminder that if we don't have it here in the policy, it'll default to what the policy is, which is limitless items, because that's not much. There is no limit for books and CDs and other things, so. There is, three renewals, but the number of items to check out. Right, I mean, it's with many of the carrier hubs. And we can always, if you'd like, think about it, and we can bring it back next session.
We're circling back to the library of things. I'm leaning more towards changing the lending period and leaving the renewals to one.
Wait, so you want to change what the lending period be on the renewals?
Yeah, so I want to, I'm thinking of increasing the lending period.
Or increasing?
I'm thinking thirty days, just from what I've seen, some of the other days, and doing just one renewal.
All right.
Again, I would like to get those items circulated.
Right. I think thirty days for some of these, it makes sense. The alternative I would recommend would be seven days and three renewals, but essentially the goal's about the same, which is about thirty days or twenty-one days.
May I do a time check? John and I have another foundation event tonight, so we'll have to leave close to four. Yeah.
We're beating this to death now.
Correct.
I'm good with this as it is.
All right.
Yeah.
The only other things I'll mention is eventually, again, we can come back to this, but video games, we don't have any yet, but it's something that we can add to the collection. And for those, historically, I don't recommend more than two or three we check out of card, and that the time period be shortened to say like a week with, well, never renewals.
Do you get like donations of video games?
Not technically, but we do, it is on there as an option. Just most people don't consider the library as an option to donate video games.
Well, I will be donating a lot of video games here shortly, because I'm cleaning out my house to move. So just making sure you have space to keep them or hold on to them until we can.
Yes. And lastly, we don't currently list on the page how much and how frequently our e-materials check out. Currently, just so you know, Hoopla, we have a limit of five concurrent checkouts per card. They check out for twenty-one days. Well, the user can decide between seven and twenty-one, but it defaults to twenty-one. And the renewal for Hoopla is one. For Overdrive, which is also known as Libby, there is a limit of six items checked out per card. They check out for, I believe, default twenty-one days, and again, renew for one. I bring this one up just so you know that that's what it is. And then two, we're carefully monitoring the Hoopla e-materials budgets. Hoopla is distinct from Overdrive in that Hoopla materials are purchased per checkout. So when somebody checks it out, it pools from our budget that we provide to Hoopla. So it's per checkout is the cost. And as people are using more and more Hoopla, the budget we're allocated is not going to be able to keep up and keep pace. So in the near future, I'll likely recommend that we reduce the number of items that can be checked out per card from either four or three, depending on where we see that budget. And I do expect next month to have a budget for you to review for collections, so you can get a better idea of where our e-material spending has been, in particular, Hoopla versus Overdrive, and we'll see the stats of checkouts, so you can get a better idea of where we're at there.
Now, that makes sense, and I believe you gave us a warning on this a few months ago, too.
Yes, but now we have it there. Other changes to this, and again, we can probably vote on it next time, but we don't have a clause that allows for us to charge for component parts. So for example, kits, if we lose an item, if somebody loses a part or somebody breaks, because the kits tend to be per item relatively expensive, as opposed to like a damaged book, we want to give that flexibility to be able to replace individual components when it makes sense and when we're able to. So for example, if they lose the binoculars to a parks kit, rather than charging a hundred whatever dollars for the kit, we charge ten dollars for the binoculars, and then we can replace it. So that's what this clause is adding for, kind of like thinking about. And lastly, our fee schedule, no updates, but we, I want to have just the lost and damaged materials separate from the fees up here, so that way people know clearly, lost or damaged, there is a replacement clause, and then there is the five-dollar reprocessing, so that it's already in our policy, but just to clarify, I moved it down to the fee schedule, so people know.
Do we need to specify that, like, they cannot procure this themselves?
So traditionally, many libraries will allow it.
Oh.
And we can, we don't really prohibit it from I C in here. What we usually ask is that if it is an item that is bought as a replacement, that has to be the same condition. So it's usually matching the I S P, and that's what we recommend. Because other times, people would just bring in any old copy of whatever it might be and then it doesn't match the record, doesn't have a log, and so then we have to redo the record and so that's kind of defeating the purpose of getting that light kind of out. Alright, and so we don't necessarily have to put on these unless you think it's looking good. There was one section I did not add and you can kind of leave this out for next time. We don't currently have listed the responsibilities for when we borrow. It's in the application when people sign it, but it's not listed on our website and like the printer policies. So this is a recommendation, it's aligning with what we do in, in the library. One thing that I was surprised to learn, which isn't, it's standard in some cases, but what our staff have been doing historically is since you have to have a parent or guardian currently be fiscally responsible for the account, associated with the account, the historical tradition has been that once the minor has come to age, if there's any outstanding balance, that balance is then transferred to the parent or guardian that set up their account in the first place and they as a newly eighteen-year-old have a fresh start, but their new library card is an adult. We don't currently have that written in any of the policies and so I have included that here. But again, it's up to you, the board, to really decide whether that is what you think is correct and keeping in mind the next discussion we're going to have about at what age we want patrons to be able to get a card with or without a parent or guardian's involvement. Because right now, this is all contingent on all minors requiring a parent or guardian to be kind of the fiscal trustee for their accounts actually, right? But if we change that, then this might not be applicable anymore. So I would recommend, kind of considering, think about this, we don't have to do that right now, but I do want to get us before Virginia and John leave to kind of introduce the second part of this discussion, which I just alluded to, which is our patron confidentiality and borrowing policy. So here up on the screen is currently the extent of our borrowing policy and what it means to get a library card here in Escapito. Who can get a library card? Any person with a legal photo ID. That is the extent of what we have as far as who can get a library card. Now, the second part, I've had some more details. What kinds of IDs are acceptable? Yep. The application, of course, and you have to come in person with that legal ID. And then this bullet is also very important, parents or guardians must sign the application and show ID for children who are teens under eighteen years of age. The application states then that they become responsible for that minor's account and any charges on it, which is why we then historically, when the minor turns eighteen, transfer those to the parent or guardian's account. Now, any person means any person, as far as it's written right now. So my question to you is to clarify, what happens if a teenager with a legal driver's license wants to get a library card? This policy right here tells us that any person with a legal ID can get it. But then now in the bullet, we're saying that we need parents to be there responsible. This turns up my questions as far as at what age do you, the board, feel comfortable having somebody of any age get a library card and then at what point are you comfortable with either the cardholder being responsible for the charges versus a parent or guardian? And what interactions do you see as far as, you know, can a teenager of this age get a library card without a parent? Do we need to require a parent to sign? Do the parents have to be there in person with their physical ID so we can prove the identity? These are all questions that I'm trying to, you kind of get an idea and we're not going to have any answers today, I expect, but this is kind of the process we're leading to. In the document I shared with you, I found comparable policies in some of our else operated libraries at Riverside, just for reference, at Riverside, they are okay with just the signature, so a copy of the photo ID and a signature of the parent on the library card application being enough. They don't require the parent or guardian to be there physically to prove that they exist. As you can see, your parents need not be present, love and form assigned by them. They also align with a person ages fifteen and seventeen signing for their own library card with a proper ID. Again, if we do something like that, we have to take into consideration the historical case of us transferring account balances to the parent or guardian responsible.
Well, yeah, but if the person is under eighteen, they're not legally responsible in this state, the parent is.
We, that is not, that is one of the imperfections. But, which is why I've asked the city attorney to make sure we understand it. I have seen other libraries and other cases where minors are allowed to enter into contracts, which will be considered getting a library card, a contract between the individual and the library, the other city. Some of the imperfections have it that as long as the minor doesn't reject the contract by the time they turn eighteen, then they are found as binding to that contract.
Well, I understand that they'd be bound to it when they turn eighteen, but when they're under eighteen, the parent is responsible.
Correct.
And I can't see allowing anybody to do something without the parent's approval, which would potentially financially encumber the parent and could allow the underage minor to do something irresponsible that the parent couldn't control.
The valid point, as we can see with some of these other libraries, they're, they've taken a gambit as far as when library card can be allowed. So if we take, as John suggested, that a parent has to be involved and because the children can't be fiscally responsible over the case. One, we can either make it so that, for example, children under the age of eighteen can get a library card without a parent, that's just online use only, which would have no, there's no cost associated. There's the option of, like we're doing, the parent has to agree to it and then any cost transferred to the parent's account once they turn eighteen. We can set a limit to how many items are checked out per underage library card. That's an option to limit the amount of exposure to costs. Another reason I bring this up is that there is a law that passed, the state, that will require by 2029 that all children through third grade have a library card. And so in that case, we have to think about what kind of library card we allow for that, given the fact that if they have to have a library card and we want to facilitate that to being in alignment with state law, then we have to consider, alright, a third grader or a second grader, let's say a second grader has to get a library card, they all have to get it. How do we make it so that they can get it while requiring, for example, parents to be responsible? What will be the process for that? There is also another aspect to this, which is patron record confidentiality and that goes into the state statute which exists, which I'll bring up here. And so according to the statute, we can turn this off from the loop. Oops, I went back to, back to there. So this is what I sent to the city attorney, which is according to the state statute, library staff are not allowed to share records with anybody but the person for that account. So for example, a child has a library card, right, so they have a library account. A strict reading of the statutes would indicate that we as staff cannot let the parents know what is on the child's account without the child's written authorization. So I've asked the attorney, of course, their view on this because if you look at some of the other library systems that I pulled their policies from, they've taken different approaches to it. San Francisco Public Libraries follow this very strictly and require parents to get the written consent from their child to access and this takes different forms, so written consent can be the parent has their child's library card in hand, that is implied consent because they have the card. Other times, other libraries allow it if the child is in person with the parent and says, yes, they can look at my account. It's really at the local level that we get to decide how you will interpret written authorization to access the account.
I've got to leave, but I'm the only one on the board who's raised teenagers and not having total control over what you're responsible for while the runner eighteen is crazy.
Well, I also raise teenagers. I'm a thirty-year-old. And actually, the concern that comes up for me, which happened most recently, was when there is a materials challenge and we are responsible or we're perceived to be responsible for the items that a child checks out or has access to and our defense is we don't monitor what is appropriate for anyone that walks through the door, that is the parent or guardian responsibility, so in that respect, I think it protects the library if the students or child has a parent or guardian sign because they're ultimately responsible.
Right, I think we also have to consider, there is, it's of course not a black and white issue. The concern, of course, would be, so for example, we do a heroing policy in our community development and all that, that it's the right of the parent to work with their child or children, decide what is acceptable. We don't decide what is acceptable.
And Reno, I'm so sorry to interject, I just, there's a point of clarification there, I just wanted to, for Brown Act purposes, just because we're diving into a pretty deep detail of policy, that in essence, we have it agendized where it says we're reviewing this type of policy, but the public isn't aware of this depth.
Absolutely.
I'm just concerned that if we were doing this kind of discussion, even though I don't remember the public present, that they might have some say in this. So just for the agenda pack, maybe if we were to table this the next meeting, you could include this as an attachment so that people understand kind of what's being discussed and you could have more.
I think that might, I'm comfortable with that.
I love that because I have a lot of opinions on this and I have to leave.
And I would recommend if before the next meeting you have any questions for me, I can prepare more, more examples and can I give you some more options?
Could you pull the policy from the school district?
I did not.
Okay, could you do that for us so we can see what they, how they regulate it?
Yes, so I'm fine with it, if the board likes to, we want to table this for further detailed discussion next week with the full, or next month for the full board, I'm fine with that.
And in addition to what Carolyn just mentioned too, but AOA example would be helpful as well, what their guidance is.
I can pull out some industry standards rather than just in California. We have to keep in mind that we are limited to what California's laws are, but I can definitely give you some more examples that might relate or be close enough to how California libraries are working with this.
Do we have San Diego?
San Diego is as broad as far as it is.
Okay, okay.
The other question is, do we even tackle this right now when there's not been a challenge or anything? Do we keep it the same and not?
Isn't it a domino effect? Don't you need this for the collection wording?
We, I would recommend that the board do take this on just in case, for example, a teenager refuses their parent access to their account and cites state law because they could and we don't have a policy that says otherwise. And that's kind of the scenario where I envision it most likely to happen. I don't envision a second grader saying, I don't want my parent to look at my library card.
So I know John had brought up a concern, a fiscal concern, right? And I know this is within the sphere of libraries, but I think it might be worthwhile, I believe, within the medical field, a teenager that is fifteen or sixteen can consent to services without their parent. So I think it might be worthwhile to look at that. I know there's HIPAA, because there's concerns about privacy there as well, but there's obviously, there's a fiscal aspect to that, so it might be worthwhile kind of looking into that. I know medical-wise, there's a lot more restrictions, but we have some commonalities in that.
Oh yeah, I was thinking, coming from the blood bank world, that a student can start donating blood without parent consent at seventeen. Okay guys, sorry, I have to leave, catch up with you guys in a minute.
So just to confirm, the board is motioning to table this?
Yeah, we're gonna, I don't think we need to motion.
You don't need to motion. Yeah, so it's, they already voted on the collection developments for the confidentiality and borrowing, those can wait.
Okay.
Thanks Reno.
That's for me, alright, so then we're gonna, the board has?
I'll take over from here.
There you go.
Thank you, Virginia, let's just move to the statistics report.
Sure, this is the TDC stuff. Strategy plan, I'm trying to switch this to kind of do more recent updates rather than everything that's happened in the timeline, so you understand, saves us time. So strategy plan has community hub cultural connector. So as far as the community partnerships and visibility, creating mutual values, supporting organizations, we continue with our revocal shop local program and each year we're getting either more or slight differences in who's signing up for that. I am targeting that as one of the programs that we want to really work with and enhance going forward, especially promoting it on social media and increasing awareness of it. Beyond that visibility at local community events, we've been really trying to push more outreach, so I attended a Rotary Club meeting, I'm trying to have another one that John invited me to. We have, of course, we're right now in the middle of attending end of school year events to promote our summer reading program, I was at the La Esco Day event and so we're always looking for more outreach opportunities to be part of. As far as partnerships being created, the Law Library partnership continues where we have some people from Law Library come in and provide assistance with legal forums. We have meditation programs with several health organizations coming in. Magic Arts Association here in downtown, we're a member of and we'll be hosting one of their meetings and so we try to continue to be engaged with arts in the community, especially downtown. Just today, we had a nice outreach event from TDC, I think one of the banks. They have a kind of a career day activity for children and they had a bunch of like three, four-year-olds putting on their brand outfits and taking photos of different careers. So that was enjoyable to see this morning. We do have a new website, if you haven't visited, I encourage you to visit, I especially encourage you to visit probably next week once all the things we found this week are finished or polished up. But it is functional, it should offer a much better browsing experience. We're working on improving the mobile version of it as we see and learn what we can and not do. But I have at full access to edit the library site's pages, so we have the ability to update it as needed quickly, so it's very responsive. Embracing diverse cultures, we continue to translate most of our big program flyers and marketing materials to Spanish and it should say researching alternative channels and campaigns for other venues. So for example, can we afford to promote some areas? For example, can we afford to promote some radio on the radio? So we're looking into different channels or Spotify, et cetera, to kind of expand, contingent on budgets, of course. Lots of different special programs celebrating cultures around the world. We have, of course, our Lunar New Year celebration, Noru's Version New Year, Dia de los Niños, and of course, our monthly valuable clubs and bi-weekly inclusive art club. Those are just some, we have a lot more. We really are doing great work as far as promoting different cultures. I'd like to see more diversity in our second Saturday concerts, both in the content and the age, the target age of all the concerts, what we're aiming towards. But beyond that, I think I'm very happy to see the extent of our cultural programming at the library. Any questions about the strategic goals, meaning the connector?
So for marketing, I might, I might get more information for you. I know the business and marketing at Cal State San Marcos, their students, business students, they take on different projects every semester. I'm not too familiar with, with what the scope of that is. I know that they call the partners like sponsors, so I don't know if there's a financial aspect to that. But I can try to get some more information to see if maybe there's a partnership that we could do where every, you know, semester they help out, develop some marketing for the library. So I can initiate that and then connect you, Reno.
Excellent, yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah, and then regarding the Saturday concert series, I definitely agree in having a little bit more variation with that. How, how could we help make some of those connections for you?
I would say, if you know anybody that is an artist, a musician, and they have not heard of the concert series, or would be interested to send us our way. We usually plan for it in the late fall, so probably around October, November at the latest. Is when we start making sure that we have the lineup for the following year. But the sooner the better, that way we can kind of establish, keeping in mind that next year, at some point, the library will probably close and it'll probably affect where we have the concert, but we will expect to have it somewhere. It might just happen to be outside somewhere.
Okay. And so for the musicians that you bring on board, has, have those usually been where you are reaching out to them?
Yeah, and it's usually a, um, a known list that we contact, that we know are routinely available. But I'm always open to new groups, groups that might be touring. There's a lot of options, I think.
Okay. Because I, I think it would be neat to maybe have a form or something where, you know, like, apply to be one of our Saturday concert musicians. Um, and I, I do know that, you know, there's usually compensation.
Yes.
Uh, but maybe even with, with the applying, you know, because it's going to be giving them, you know, a stage. It might even open up the possibility of no compensation, that, you know, only being some of that straight on the budget. So maybe doing some, some application, or, you know, if I know somebody, I can fill out the form to recommend.
Right.
Of like, hey, you should reach out to, you know, so-and-so. Um, that way also reduces a little bit of that legwork you all have to do.
Yep, I think that's a great idea.
Perfect, thank you.
Cool, I think you already answered my question that I was going to ask about the mobile website and responsiveness. And I think there was something with the formatting after it launched.
Yes.
That's well on its way to being fixed.
Yeah, the city, all, at the form, all the departments work on updating the pages and we learn issues that were noticed while during the pre-test phase, especially, most of those are testing on computer. We now have the option and the opportunity to test in mobile. We're seeing and asking the developer, what can be done to, you know, height certain things or resize things better on mobile? Because some of it right now isn't appearing the way we would ideally want it to look. Or in the library's case, I think we have too many buttons when it goes to mobile. I appreciate buttons, but we don't need as many as are appearing. And so that's all things right now that are, we're learning and we're working through.
Nice. And any other questions on?
Yep.
So I know, so I know, and I have noticed that a lot of the flyers are more in Spanish now. Does the city have a policy on Spanish on our website? Because I, I did look at some other libraries and they have, and even non-public libraries have the option where you go to the top right and it'll translate the page for you in a different language. I don't think, I, I tried looking, I didn't see it. Oh, is it Google?
Yeah, I'll say it's a little hidden, but it does give you the option. It depends on Google Translate. And in most cases, this is a fairly good job, so let's just test it on Spanish because I...
Yep.
Some of it is a little strange, like for example, here this is lowercase, but that just might be a formatting issue. But as long as it's a, something that is like an image, for example, then it will translate it. And we are trying to make as much of the website, Google Translate from PDFs, to be HTML or pages, so that way the Google Translate can work. Anything that's static like PDFs or documents will automatically change. So we're, we're trying to make it as accessible as possible. I'm keeping that in mind as we update the pages and add pages.
Got it, thank you for showing me that, because I went on it earlier today. And I'm used to it being like the top right, and that's where most websites have it.
And it might be something where, like the city might be able to move that somewhere else, but it is relying on that Google Translate integration.
Got it, thank you.
Move to the next part.
Sure. Stats for the month of March. Nothing new or strange. Everything is continuing to trend as far as circulation is concerned, trending upward. I've been watching in library queue, everything is trending steadily increase, not by a lot compared to last year, but we are steadily continuing to see more visits and physical checkouts, because as we're seeing a steady increase in e-materials, primarily Libby Overdrive continues to have a steady increase, but Hula as well, but just not as a, a similar rate. But enough, we're watching to see how much funds are being expended. Number of programs, I'll say I was looking at the overall number of programs, and we have already surpassed the total attendance from last year's total, and we're not done with the, the school year. So overall, program attendance is also up.
Nice. I see the volunteer hours dropped.
Yes.
Is that because a project fell off or, because the number of total active volunteers is the same?
I'll double-check. That might be that they didn't include the literacy volunteers on time when this happened. Because usually literacy adds another like three to four hundred hours per month. It went back up to around a thousand in April. So I suspect either there was a lack of programs or like activities, either in volunteers in the library or in literacy. But we have been overall staying around a hundred volunteers, with thirty or so of those being literacy volunteers. So we have around seventy active volunteers in the library, mostly with the brands bookstore and shelving. Any questions on any of the stats?
Nope, good.
Alright. So we'll move to my report, and I'll be quick because a lot of those you've already covered. So I did include some information about the library renovation project, just in general, essentially what I told you. Staff, we'll have two new staff starting this next week. A new literacy associate, so we're adding more staff to our literacy programs. So we'll have more classes and also more tutoring for adults and families. And right now, we're trying to question numbers to see if we can add one more literacy associate to increase that even more. Uh, and we'll have a new library associate three, they're kind of our second level, kind of before we get towards education supervisor, they're kind of the senior library associates in customer service. And so they tackle the account question, things like that. So we'll have a new library associate three, as one of our current associates is kind of entering retirement. Website, I just mentioned, the website, I encourage all of you to take a look. I encourage any changes you might see. I'm also much more readily able to update your biographies and photos, so if you need any changes, let me know. And of course, I invite you all, if you'd like to attend the American Library Association's conference in late June coming up, it's going to be down in San Diego at the conference center. We're sending ten library staff to at least one of the days and letting them choose which one works best for them. I'll be attending one of the days, and we have a couple staff, I'll be there for the whole conference. It's a great way to kind of see and be immersed in the world of libraries. It can be a lot, it's the biggest conference we do in library land, and it's nice that it's right here in San Diego. So excellent opportunity. And there is, sessions are specific to board committees and also, you know, governments of libraries, outreach to libraries, so there are things that would match. Beyond that, just some highlights, hopefully just go through them. We continue to have more sustainability-related programs that are, what are terrariums, what do they do? And with these programs, we bring in experts like Russell Ray from Palmar Tech, the Seculent Society, to kind of tell us about what is a terrarium, how does it work, what is the ecosystem, all that. Author series again, we're averaging between seventy and a hundred attendees each Saturday. That seems to be kind of the, the regular amount of people we see. This last month, we had brisling style jazz. And of course, our arts programs, we keep getting requests for more arts programs. And we're trying to balance that time and cost of materials along with, really right now, it's space, we don't have, the terrantine room is in high demand. And using other spaces where we're trying to grab how we can have more arts and crafts, just smaller events, or more like thirty people or less, or between ten and twenty people. But overall, very positive reviews as far as all of these programs. Pioneer Room, if you know anybody that really likes the Pioneer Room calendars, they have published one. So these are all done by the Friends of the Pioneer Room. They print and order calendars that highlight different items in the collection. This year's, you know, it's a little late, it's all the family and it's a lot of different burly Escudero Valley pioneers and family photos. They're available at the Pioneer Room for ten dollar cash donation that goes to the Friends of the Pioneer Room, which then use it to help support either new equipment or items to support the Pioneer Room. We also have two new collections up in our digital collection, called Time PM, Living Archive, and I'll just open one of these so you can get an idea. And you can see here, these are different collections that relate to families. This one seems like a more modern family, but it's all related. And this is kind of goes along with our ongoing program, which is to get digitized as Escudero, where people can donate stands of their materials, ones to be scanned for them, we return the original document. We just ask that they give us, one, the ability to use it online, so they sign away the rights for public use, and then also, we need information about what is in the picture. So they, they fill out a form that gives us details about who's in the picture, what is happening, any family history related to the photo. So this encourages ongoing donations and keeping the collections relevant and reflective of the communities here in Escudero. And of course, Children's Services, we just finished Star Wars Week, um, and it kind of floated today, so our big event was May the Fourth. We had more than two hundred people, but that'll be next month's report. Last month, we had Dia de los Niños, which we had a hundred fifteen attendees. You can see photos of that here on the left. And we also had Build Your Own Droid, I didn't get the photos in time for the report, but we had a great turnout there, also around a hundred fifteen in attendance for building their own droids in the terrantine room. And that's it for my report. Any questions, comments?
Questions, thank you. Alright, we can move on to the trustee libraries.
Both looking my way, so I'll go first. Thank you, Reno, for all that information. Yeah, so this month, we did the book club. We did the auto-renew because me and the girls had to keep rescheduling. But we really enjoyed all the questions and, and the materials that were in there. I was at that Star Wars event over the weekend, and I don't think I've seen that many people at the library while. I don't know if anybody else got a chance. I, I saw you taking photos, you know, and I saw Dan. My little one had a blast, even though he wasn't really aware of what's going on. We're not huge Star Wars fans, sorry, anyone. But he really enjoyed all the little stations that they had in the children's room. He really loved seeing everybody in costumes. He was more scared of a little boy with a paper face mask than he was of the people dressed up. But it was really great, refreshing to see so many people at the library doing different things.
So this last month, I had the opportunity to talk to a woman that I knew from the Escudero Redistricting Commission, and she expressed interest in potentially serving on the board. So good things, you know, for next year. And then I had the opportunity to go to the library about, I don't know, a month ago or so, and I checked out a couple books. And lo and behold, one of the ones that I checked out just won the Pulitzer. So, very cool, yeah.
Good stuff. Alright, I'll bring it home here. I helped review the city library website, went to City Hall and did that, and that was fun to go through that experience, and hopefully informative in some way or another. I also attended the Build Your Own Droid event with one of my kids. So they were born on May the Fourth, so they feel a special connection to Star Wars. And the droid, the droid was fun to watch, get put together, and Hocloo being used by a six-year-old is fascinating. Everyone was safe, so that's good. And that, that was it with my experiences for the library directly. I wanted to give a shout-out to Mirable for helping organize the lunch for the library staff.
Oh, yes, and I, I wanted to thank the board of the stateies for donating the time and also the booths to recognize our, our staff. And they, they definitely ate all of these meals, so they were very appreciative.
So we'll kind of set up another one, so I'll keep you posted.
And then before we head out, I do have some, some tokens of appreciation for you. I, I know this is before John, Virginia left, but I, I got you guys. So we had Volunteer Appreciation Week just a little while ago. And so as you volunteer time, here, you are volunteers, even though you are appointed. So...
Thank you so much. Aw, very cool, I love it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good.
So thank you all.
That was very nice, thank you, Reno.
And these are on behalf of the city. I'll, I'll clarify.
Thank you, city.
I do not have access to these lovely volunteer autographs.
Alright, I think that wraps us up, meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.